To order on this thirtieth day of November twenty twenty-three, please rise and join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would you please pull the roll?
Yeah, I'm gonna say something at the end.
Supervisor Snyderman?
I'm here.
Councilwoman McEnroe?
Here.
Councilwoman Martel?
Here.
Councilwoman Louie.
John has an excused absence.
Councilman Muskevone?
Present.
All right. So, four out of five, that's not too bad, and we can conduct our business. All right, so we're gonna start with a conversation about the Riverside SDP sewer district formation, and we're gonna be joined by a number of people, including Kathleen Murray, our deputy town attorney, Janice Shira, our town planning and development administrator, and Len Marchese, who is our former comptroller, but on this project is working as a project consultant. Janice is passing out some maps.
Thank you.
And this is getting exciting, because we're inching ever closer here to actually being able to break ground on a sewer district for the Riverside area, which has been a long sought-after goal. So, all right, Janice, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, yeah, so we just wanted to update you, and I'm gonna turn it right over to Kathleen to just talk about the procedures, which are really in her wheelhouse, about, you know, Town Law Article twelve C versus twelve A, and the direction we're heading in, and then we can just talk about process after that, so thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Good morning, board members. So, if you recall, we were before you several months ago, and during that discussion, we had talked about, obviously, the Riverside Sewer Project, but we had talked about it in terms of process using Town Law Article twelve C, which was a mechanism we hadn't used before, but which allowed us to implement this large-scale capital improvement across all of the town for the benefit of the Hamlet of Riverside and the Pecanic Estuary, because we had funding problems, and we wanted to be able to fund this in a way that wasn't going to be extremely detrimental to people in the Hamlet of Riverside. But since that time, a couple of things have happened that have now allowed us to switch back to Article twelve A in terms of procedure, which is the formation of a sewer district as you know it, when you form other special improvement districts. So, you, on November fourteenth, you authorized the preparation of a map plan and report in furtherance of that Riverside Sewer District pursuant to Article twelve A, and on November twenty-eighth, which was just a couple of days ago, you authorized the supervisor to execute an IMA with Suffolk County for the receipt of American Rescue Plan Act funds in an amount up to five million dollars, which will be attributed toward this project. But other than the five million dollars, Janice has been working together with Len extremely hard with EFC, I'll let her speak more about it, and a potential award that will really help facilitate this project.
Right, so you know that we have listed the project on what's known as the Intended Use Plan. Environmental Facilities Corporation is the lending arm of New York State, and so what we had originally, initially, were on this sort of, it's an annual plan and like intended plan in the future. So, we originally were on the intended plan, and now we're on the shortlist plan, like we intend to do this, and that's called the annual plan. And on that annual plan, we worked to get ourselves listed, we went through this process that you've heard me talk about before, this value planning, value engineering, where EFC looked at everything we're doing and gave it to a separate firm to make sure that any money, you know, that it's right size, we're doing, we're getting the right components, et cetera. It's a very detailed study, and because we participated in that, and it was new to them too, and it was new for us, we are eligible for hardship financing, which is zero percent for thirty years. But of course, that's for borrowing money, and we would rather have grant money. We don't wanna really have to borrow it, but we would like to borrow it so that we can sort of pay things and then get reimbursed by grants, so you don't have to encumber your own money. So, it's important that we have that piece. So, we do this value planning, thirty percent hardship financing, and then what they did was they rated all the projects on the annual plan. We scored a seventy-seven, and they told us that everything above the fifty percent funding line will receive bipartisan infrastructure law money, bill money. And so, we're waiting that award, so we'll know exactly what we're getting, but we're very hopeful it's a very good amount. So, I can't speak to the number yet, because we haven't been awarded it yet, but we think that that will, that plus that five million from the county will take us over the edge of not needing any actual, any twelve C, any money across the town.
Do we know about the EFC money?
What, they told me like imminently, like in the next couple of weeks.
They came, they came back to us with a series of questions, technical in nature, and we're preparing responses for them right now.
And there was a recent resolution showing like, you know, we had to actually ask our, you know, for a little more money to pay our consultants, because there was a lot of questions and, you know, back and forth, that they didn't initially scope in their work, so we needed that.
Janice, to what extent does local contributions, early local contributions contribute to the application process of these funds?
Well, that was the CPF money, the six million dollars that you provided was what was the catalyst for everything. Everyone took us seriously after that.
Right.
And we're actually, I think there were seven, right? We did six so far.
Roughly seven, yeah.
We're gonna do one more next year.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I only heard the six. I'm sorry. That's great. And you did two initially, because the two million originally helped us get the funding for this engineering work, also that we use that for the match, for the other money that we were asking for, it's twenty percent match, so you can't ask for it unless you have the match ready. So, we use that, we have that set aside as our match money. So, yeah, so.
And we're likely to use CPF later on again for.
Phase two.
Yeah, hookups too.
Hookups, if we get enough from EFC, we may be able to use this for the hookup, so that would be even better, because it's an existing flow situation, and that would be great.
Can I ask you to back up a little bit?
We're gonna send a gen.
On this, and just to describe for the public's adification, the overlay district and the role of Renaissance and what the original plan was and how we are, you know, and where we are now. Yeah, I know, it's right, it's about ten years' worth of work, but.
As quick as possible, I would say that we set out to do a revitalization plan in Riverside. Renaissance Downtown has worked on that Renaissance Revitalization Action Plan, also known as the RAP. That plan became the basis for the town, who we paid to do all the secret work, and all of the work that has happened to, from the RAP point on, was all done by us to get to this point now. And that is that once, no one can actually make an application for the densities and things in that overlay district until there is a sewer. So, that is why this is imperative, we have to have this worked out before anything else can come.
So, what was the idea at that time for a wastewater treatment facility and district to be put in place? Because the town, we picked this up.
Initially, they were gonna propose to be like the private operator of the district or something.
It initially started out as a private district, but that doesn't make any sense, especially when you need grant money, and it just makes more sense to be a public district. And so, we, ever since I became administrator, we've been pursuing the public option, and that's how we've been able to secure almost all the funding we need.
Right, right. So, the goals of the overlay district weren't being fulfilled.
That we remain a public facility.
That delay, they could never get past square one, because they couldn't figure out a funding mechanism to get a sewer district.
I mean, it was hard enough for us to figure it out, let alone a private person.
Which may raise some legal questions, because, which probably not right for this venue, but in terms of what, you know, Renaissance's role moving forward exactly is, when they did help with the zoning, but there was other things that they were going to do that they didn't, and there may be some questions about town lands in terms of what, you know, they're, they may have rights, if any, to acquire land.
Right, so what we did, you'll see this map in front of you, is a purple and yellow look map, and what we did was say, let's break it into two phases, because there's the phase one that we know we can do right now, and that is, let's hook up the existing homeowners, let's hook up the mobile home parks, and then let's use the residual flow for new development. So, we know, and then, then second phase would be, you know, these existing, like sort of, these neighborhoods are not anticipated to change, but it would be nice to hook them up. So, the majority of the people and the higher-density mobile homes are all in the yellow, so it's sort of like, that's the higher priority, let's get that done right now, and then the second phase, but the collection system will be there. So, it's all just a matter of tapping in, you know, and putting a new, another, they call them trains, treatment trains, and they're modular, so every time you get another two-hundred-thousand gallons, you put another treatment train into this. So, it would be four modules of two-hundred-thousand each. That's the idea here, and we're still undergoing all the SECR. So, on December twelfth, you'll have a hearing on the supplemental EIS, because we've never actually had the specific location identified until now. So, now, you've spent many years acquiring parcels, piecing it together, amending the plan, now we have it, phase one, phase two, we know where we're putting it, and now we're doing all the environmental review about that. And the options that we had were given to us by, the scope of it is by EFC, the lending arm, who said, look at these options, look at these things, and so that's exactly what we did, and what we're still doing, you'll see that, the supplemental, you saw that it was just inadequate, all that analysis is in there. And then the final other piece is that we will discuss this with the PMERs Commission, because the amount of clearing required is more than, is permitted here in this industrial subdivision.
Are they gonna require us to extinguish credits, or?
That remains to be seen. We think we may have a fairly decent public benefit case here, so I think that we're okay, but.
Especially building the SDP.
Theresa from my office has been working on that application to them, so that.
Taking a lot of individual subsidies off of them. And remember that we do have, we will have a seat on the commission, it won't be anyone, but it will be supervisor Moore will sit on that commission, so.
So, that's the extent of that, and then, I don't know, Len, you wanna discuss any of the financial side?
Well, it's always been envisioned that we make the district affordable to the residents on an O and M basis as well. So, it's anticipated that going forward, even though we're hoping for pretty much all the capital cost to be covered by outside financing, not financing, but outside sources, that there'll be an ongoing O and M that the town will probably kick in some money. We're also working with some of them in the field to figure out ways to amend the CPF law, which will allow the CPF funding stream, the environmental portion of that, to fund this operation. And so, he was pretty confident he'll be able to get something like that through. So, if we do that, then the need for the town subsidy may go away. So, there's a couple of different things that we're working on, and this project, you know, the town has never really done something like this, so there's a lot of different moving parts, and I appreciate all the work that Janice is doing, she's handling a lot here. And, you know, this is a fifty-plus-million-dollar overall project, all kinds of grant opportunities, all kinds of environmental, the one page on all the approvals that is necessary goes almost the whole page of all of the approvals that have to take place. So, there's a lot of steps that we're trying to coordinate, and I just want everybody to appreciate the effort here, it isn't a lot to get this through.
Absolutely.
So, I have some questions. One, let me start with the last piece about operations and maintenance of this, and you said that Fred may be amending the CPF law in some way that will allow some of the water quality money to be used for O and M, which would be great. When we were doing the twelve C, was it, we were looking at sort of a townwide district, and now we're back to twelve B?
A.
Twelve A. And so, is there a mechanism, let's say we don't have that, for the town to help subsidize the operation here, now that it's, wouldn't be a townwide district? Maybe that's a Kathleen question?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think we can explore that, certainly if not through the CPF funding, through other mechanisms in the budget. So, when you would form the district, you would probably have a resolution authorizing something to the extent that the O and M gets paid from a budgetary line or something along those lines?
Because it's wonderful that potentially the infrastructure is gonna be paid for with grant money and CPF money, and a lot of the hookups, but the cost of processing that waste could be a burden too. We wanna keep that down to a very reasonable amount.
The first phase, we're thinking about a million dollars a year, plus or minus, in O and M, and.
So, we'd probably need to bring in half a million to make it so that we're in that two-hundred dollars a year range per household.
Yeah. And that will go down also, that's the initial projections, but as we bring more people online, especially like some commercial development, that will lower the cost of O and M subsidies from all parties. So, you know, this is the worst-case scenario when we start on day one, but once some development starts and some intensified use start, and they start paying their share and hookup fees, those, the economics of them contributing will limit the amount of town money.
So, because I think the economics are super important here, because there's a lot of people with limited means in this area, which comes back to now the twelve A.
Right.
And the formation of the sewer district. Do these individuals get to vote on that formation of the sewer district?
To the extent that the board puts it out on its own motion, yes, they would. That's a decision that the town board would have to make in terms of whether or not it's going to.
So, it can be done permissively, where the town board just does it?
It's, so, the three steps is your, the preparation of your map plan and report, second step is your public hearing, however long that takes, and third step is the public interest order, authorizing the project to move forward, subject to permissive referendum, which then means your residents can, within that district boundary, can either petition the board to put it on mandatory referendum, or you could put it out to mandatory referendum on your own motion, for those property owners only. If you remember, there are some distinctions for that kind of vote for those property owners to weigh in. And then, just one note in terms of the affordability, we'll likely need New York State Comptroller approval for the formation of the district, and they are looking exactly at whether or not it's affordable for these residents. I've already been speaking with the attorney at the state comptroller's office, so she knows that this is something we're working on. If we can show that we have enough grant funding, we might not have to get that approval, but it's, you know, it's something that we have to build into the timeline.
If the construction of the plant and all the mains and all the pumping stations, if all of that is that, is paid for, then the property owners aren't paying any debt service for construction.
Right.
Which is normally a big number, it can be a very big number, but all they're paying is the operation and maintenance. So, but when they're voting, if they're voting to form this district and they're looking at the economic impact, it all, it sounds like it's gonna be zero. It's zero on their property tax, it's, as they use the system, they'll benefit.
Yeah, they'll pay user fees, but then you lose the need to pump your sanitary system or replace it, so even though you may have to pay two-hundred dollars or some number for a user fee, it will still be worth it.
My concern with that, and this is where I think the town will have to do some work, talking with residents and helping them understand it, this is an unusual circumstance, where we've been able to, we believe, compile all the money needed for the infrastructure. That was a dream that we'd ever think, never thought we'd realize. So, if, let's say, we're not able to cross the finish line here, because the group votes against it, we're walking away from thirty million, over thirty million dollars in money in grant funding.
Well, I can tell you that at the Franco meetings, the people there are excited about this. They, they want it done last year. I mean, that's the feedback that we've been getting from anybody who's engaged in the community, so I'm encouraged by that.
It is the key to revitalization in this area.
Yes.
It's the key, and we, there's a lot of property owners that are eager to build according to the RAP, and we're losing opportunities, because we don't have it. You know, the 7-Eleven, if it's happening is a classic example, that could have been developed according to the RAP plan, but the fate is unknown right now.
I haven't done this, this research, how many of these properties have water mains, do you know?
Oh, you mean that are not on well, on well water?
That are on Suffolk County water, or the water district in this area?
Most of them are on water, Suffolk County water, that's how we.
Theresa's working that out, but yeah, there's two-hundred-and-thirty-seven parcels.
Okay, good, that's good.
That's how we were able to get.
So, there's water bill, and you know how municipalities do this, is a percentage of the water bill that goes to.
Yes, and the engineer has done all that.
That's how, that's how we formulated the current base case flow, based on current Suffolk County Water Authority District billing data. We have the pull maps on that data on it.
But we are getting that more specific, like making sure there's no wells in proximity. That's another side of secret analysis, that we're making sure of that, but we don't, at this point, we don't think so. We don't see any private wells, they're all on public water.
It should also be noted at this point that the northern part of this map is the Pecanic Estuary. It borders the, you know, the headwaters of the Pecanic Estuary system, so.
Yeah, I don't think that there's much travel time between wastewater and the bay right here.
Yeah, it goes.
That's right. And that's why it was so important to obtain, acquire many of these parcels. The county acquired the parcels where we're having the maritime park, you acquired the park, the piece next door from Didi Godtow, and then we acquired Schumeta, so we have, it's a really interesting planning project, because there's so much open space, and then, you know, the density side like kind of balances it out, so it's, it's done a nice job maintaining that northern portion, that's habitat and open space.
It's very exciting, yeah, you guys have done great work on this. It's very hard getting to this point, so now we just have to get over the finish line.
No, we have a pretty detailed timeline set up and tasks and deliverables that have to happen, and.
Yes, so the next step is the, December twelfth, there'll be a public hearing, then in January, we'll be having the public hearing on the map plan and report.
So, December twelfth is a public hearing on exactly what?
The supplemental EIS for the placement of the system, and all the attendant SECR that goes with these, with the value engineering report that required us to look at three different options, injection wells, leaching pools, or constructed wetlands, on how to deal with the effluent, so that is all in that SECR analysis, and then, you know, the process is to have a public hearing on that supplemental draft, then it will, you know, we would recommend it stay open, and then you'll have another one.
So, that's the public hearing for the secret purposes, but in terms of district formation purposes, we're hopeful that on December twelfth, we could have a notice of hearing for the district formation, with that public hearing being on January ninth, and it would then meet up with that SECR hearing. I say hopeful, because we cannot really, I wouldn't recommend finalizing that map plan and report until we have the award letter from EFC, because obviously, the function of that map plan and report is to really identify for everybody how much this will cost each individual homeowner, and so without that grant money or that grant award, we don't want to.
That affects the numbers greatly.
Yes, so we're, we're hopeful, that's our, our potential timeline, and the timeline that we'd like to build for.
On the scheduling, some of the grant monies expire if we don't break ground within a certain amount of time. I think the ARPA money is one of those.
Yes.
So, you know, that's five million dollars that we lose if we, what's the, it's.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, and, and we have.
December, so today's twenty, twenty-three, so it's, it works out actually perfect.
So, there is a, very much a ticking clock here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, no doubt about it.
And we have to, we have to file our claims timely on, based on which one will expire first, you know, so there'll be a whole claiming process methodology that we'll have to go through.
Right.
And we did provide the county with that timeline for that ARPA IMA, so they're aware of it as well.
Okay.
And we've been sort of trying to make sure, you know, asking, you know, we kind of will probably need a facilitating engineer to help, you know, maintain whoever, you know, and you know the RFQ went out, so we'll get those qualified individuals back, and then we'll be vetting who we received, and, you know, we'll move on from there.
The first step is, because even though we use Nelson and Pope to do like conceptual plans, these are not really close to a design engineer, so that's the next step, which would be a much larger contract.
Yeah, the next step is a hundred percent engineering, like all the survey work, the TOPOs, the, you know, all the engineering work.
Does that include hookups?
All of it, the laterals, everything, yeah, they're going to figure all of that out.
Pump stations, laterals, where the pipes go, where the water mains are.
Originally, we thought that we were gonna need to acquire a bunch of easements because of the flow, but then it was decided in conversations with some of our engineers that perhaps this isn't gonna be a totally gravity-fed system, and that would require less in the amount of easements, because you'd have some as forced mares, so you don't have to go as deep. So, that would, we didn't wanna proceed with the easement acquisitions until we kind of knew what we needed, no sense in getting easements that we don't need.
And we can't do that value engineering until that district is actually formed, right?
There's a lot of like moving parts, there's a lot of complicated if-then-things that are happening.
In terms of expenditure to date, besides, you know, the engineering that we've been paying for, and CPF has been acquiring land using the water quality monies for around the sewer treatment plant, and possible areas where constructed wetlands, those have all been water quality, so I think we've had several million dollars now spent in CPF water quality related to creating options for this sewer treatment facility. But then I'd sort of wanted to just quickly go over the numbers in terms of the generosity of others here, so we've got CPF with six million so far, and I believe a commitment for another million next year, and then we have Senator Schumer, five million dollar grant, we have County Executive Bologna with the five million dollar grant, so, so those together, that's sixteen million immediately with another million, so that's seventeen million, plus whatever we're getting from EFC, which could be substantial, should get us to the point, hopefully, where the entire phase one is paid for.
That's right.
Correct.
All right, that's remarkable.
We'd also, we also probably, we have to, part of the EFC process is we're gonna have to pass some bond resolutions to allow for us to borrow short-term from them, so this way the town doesn't have to front the money during construction, because that, it's gonna be a lot of money, so.
And that's at zero percent.
At zero percent, so we would kind of basically get a line of credit, where we'll pay the vendors as they do work.
Zero percent in this industry environment is really nice.
Yes, we'll have zero percent.
And we save a lot of money, because you're talking about potentially borrowing ten millions, over ten millions, so at zero percent.
Yeah, even if we didn't, even if we didn't have to pay it in the long term during the construction, you'd have to lay it out, because the way the grants work is you spend the money, then you have to wait to get it back, so, yeah, you would, we would be looking at ten million dollars, and if the town's making, you know, four or five percent on its money, that, that, yeah, you wouldn't wanna do that.
You wouldn't wanna do that.
You wouldn't wanna do that.
It would not be a good financial decision.
Normally, you come asking for money here, we're coming for money.
We got lots of money, hopefully.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, but just to reiterate really quick, for the amount of hours that Len and I have put into this project, Janice has probably put in five times that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's worth.
Going back years.
Unbelievable, the amount of time and energy.
It's not just time, this is so complex, you know, I've been involved with a number of these that often don't get to the finish line. We're very close here.
We're very close, it's gonna happen, there's a will, there's a way, everybody's been so positive, this board has been amazing, and, and thank you.
And the community.
The community has been amazing.
The community is very supportive.
Very supportive, and so with that kind of support and that level of like, you know, we're not fighting an uphill battle, it's sort of like, everybody's lifting it up, so it's happening, and that's nice.
Very few towns develop new sewer treatment plants, this is a rare thing, okay, but it was really development, developer-related, and for us to do this is very unique. Is there any, I know there was discussions with the county about taking over the operations, you know, we've talked about that a couple of times over the years, you know, is that something that's still?
That will be at the will of the board, right, that you can have, the district will, the town owns the property, the district will.
We can contract under Town Law Article twelve A, you can have, you can contract with the county to provide that, you know, to run the district, so to speak, yes.
Or you can even have a private operator operating it, it doesn't have to be.
Right now, the private options are much less expensive.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
I was just, yeah, just saying.
Anytime the county gets involved, we can add zeros on the end of everything.
I just wanted, yeah, cost-wise, would that be good or not?
And with the new technology, the manpower needed is minimal.
It's basically an unmanned plant.
Right.
Right, it has a lot of digital.
Look, it's visited once a week.
Four, oh, no, four hours a day.
Four hours a day gets visited.
Needs to be an operator there four hours a day.
All right, so we have reached eleven o'clock, which is what we had slated for this conversation. So thank you.
Thank you.
All excellent. We look forward to those hearings, resolution.
Yep.
All right.
Great.
Thank you guys. Good work, Janice.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to my colleagues especially. Without them, this wouldn't be possible. I'm still here for the next one.
So Janice here, you don't have to move. You can, you can stay right here.
And then Charles just has to bring in, um, Emery and Shelby and.
All right, so our next topic of conversation is the Climate Action Plan. Some people, it's calling it CAP, the acronym. But the Climate Action Plan, and this is something that's been quite a long time in the, in the works. And, uh, we're gonna bring in Ramble by Zoom. Welcome. And we have Janice Shearer, our Town Planning and Development Administrator. So.
So yeah, I'll just.
So yes, we start from, uh, I guess, uh, how we got here and what's in the plan.
Sure, I, just briefly, and then I'll turn it over to our, um, consultants. But in, we, this all began with a, um, grant, a clean energy community program grant. For the preparation of a climate action plan. That happened in twenty twenty two. Uh, where we were awarded, as you remember, Mike was always getting us to be in clean energy community, climate smart community. Points, bronze, silver, all that. That was part of this. And so in this preparation of this plan. Um, Ramble was going to do, you know, our, um, greenhouse gas emissions. Um, you know, look at the sort of what. The reductions could be, you know, quantifiable carbon reduction, a relational cost, timeframes, benefits, et cetera. So we awarded that contract to Ramble. Um, Ramble is a, um, global architecture engineering and consulting company. And they were founded in Denmark. They operate across thirty five countries with eighteen thousand employees. Two thousand experts, um, in environment and health, water, energy, architecture, uh, landscape architecture and management consulting. And so we have Emery Lee and Shelby here on Zoom. They're from Ramble and they've been working very hard on this plan.
Before you turn it over though to them, I mean, we're, we're a coastal community. So we have issues of erosion, sea level rise and, you know, effects of global warming on our, you know, aquatic life. And, you know, it's a lot of factors. So I, I, I just, if you could just sort of address the why. Like why, why should we even have a climate action plan? Why is this important? Why are we bothering to do this?
That's a great question. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if you're paying attention. You have to understand that climate change is real and that it's happening and we're seeing that with increased, um, storm. Sir, you know, more intense storms, things that are, it's not just that, we've always had storms, we know we've, but the intensity. The superstorm sandies are more likely than not to happen. And, um, you know, there's a lot when it comes to just planetary health. When you start really looking into the research and the reasons why, it's the plants, the animals, the polar ice caps, the sea level rise. The storms, we're a coastal community. There's many, many reasons to say, what is causing this? And it's greenhouse gas. And you remember that, that, you know, this gas, greenhouse gases get trapped from the atmosphere and the causal global warming. Um, we're trying to move.
Why us then? Why not let everybody else take care of it? Why should we respond?
Well, we've been a leader and we've always said we were going to join in, you know. Back in the day when, you know, we started the Sustainability Committee, we started, um, Mayor's Climate Protection Agreements. Um, there was a lot of places that said, you know, we can't leave it to someone else. We're going to make these commitments. And so this town board and others before you have made those commitments and said, we're gonna lower our carbon emissions. By a certain date. We're gonna move toward, um, net zero or, or meaning that we're not having, we're. Accounting for as much as we're putting out, we're accounting for it, right? So we're not releasing all these carbon emissions.
And Janice, if I could.
Town's planning with its goals, with its adopted goals. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So just to interject here, you know, part of our system in the United States is significant local control over some of these decisions. Uh, we're not necessarily a top down government. You know, we believe in local decisions and local leadership. And that is in part what we're doing here. You know, a hundred year storms come every twelve years, you know, that's a significant change. So, um, but that's important, I believe, in a municipal governance sense that, you know, people know that the localities, towns and counties. Are significant players in, in climate decisions.
I mean, just this, this past summer was the hottest, you know, there's these hot, hot summers and like you're dealing with like a lot of changing. Climate change, changes to our, our way of life are at risk.
I mean, I think there's people who may differ, but, uh, to me, this is an existential crisis for the planet. And that, everybody has to do their part, uh, or, you know, there won't be future generations. Uh, you know, this is probably the biggest crises that the planet has faced. In, uh, maybe ever, you know, so, uh, as a civilization. So this is like, you know, it's not fair to just say everybody else should do their part. We have to do our part. And the town has over and over said. We are not going to abandon our responsibility. We're going to be a part of that change or as you say, a leader in that change. That we might be even before some other communities.
Absolutely. And we have to, you know, recognize that it's real. There are effects that, you know, maybe it seems hopeless to some people. Why bother? But it, everything helps. Everybody who believes they can make a difference can make a difference. So, um, it, it does matter. It is important. It's not something to push off into the future. It's something to respond to now. And, and the purpose of this plan was to say, I don't, we don't want to respond to the, um. You know, latest article in the New York Times or the thing de jour. We need like a comprehensive strategy. And we all agree on what those strategies are and then work toward achieving them. So it's not the end, it's the beginning. It's not like this is the, this is it. This is the only thing we can ever do now. This is, this makes sense because it, it provides a framework. Uh, to operate within so that it's not coming from all over the place. It's like, we can just. Look at it and, and methodically take things off and work toward those things that are going to have a measurable impact. Um, and also we put out just quickly, we put out that CAP survey, almost, um, four hundred people. And the town responded to that survey. We sent it via email to over sixteen thousand emails that we had on our email addresses, over nine thousand people. Opened the email, looked at it, you know, we can see those metrics, so, um.
I know that some people say, well, that's, you know, just a small percentage of the community, but. You have national polling where you have four hundred respondents and that is indicative of the larger population. So it's not necessarily everybody responding. But it is a sample size that is statistically meaningful. And I think that people have to understand that when you're doing polling, that if you want to get a sense of the community, you don't, you know. A, a four hundred person sample size is a decent pool in terms of margin of error.
Do you want to dissect the survey now or wait?
You can wait. Um, I would like to introduce Ramble and go through it and, and just make the earlier point, the bigger point that this is. A strategy. It's a strategy plan, a strategic plan. It's a comprehensive plan. And, um, we would like, we invite the feedback. We want to hear the feedback. That's the point of the public hearing and all of moving forward.
So to be clear, the public hearing we're having is on the draft plan.
Yes.
So we're not adopting anything. It's, we're having a public hearing on the draft plan.
Yeah.
And that public hearing will then, the, the input from that and this. And the Planning Commission and the Planning Board will all be put into a revised plan.
Sure.
And then we'll then have another workshop and public hearing and then adopt it.
That's up to you if you want to do that. The board, it's at the board's pleasure. If it, if it resulted in minimal changes. Then it results in minimal changes. If it was like, you know, a huge undertaking to make a lot of significant changes. Then it would go further on. You know, it's really at what you, what comes out of the hearing, the comments. And what they mean for the actual strategies that are important, you know, in here. If, if, you know, you want to eliminate a strategy, say, we're, you know, I just opened the book and we don't want strategy eleven. Well, that's just striking out strategy eleven, you know, that's easy. If you're like, we need twenty five more different strategies under this sector, then that's different.
When you start removing strategies, you start decreasing the percentages and the numbers and they all change and shift and.
Right, and so that's why it's important to understand where the numbers came from and the strategies themselves. And that's really why Ramble's here.
Saying is if, if it changes radically, then yeah, you'd have to probably do another public hearing. If you're just making minor adjustments to it without adding new things that weren't part of the original plan. You could adopt it without probably additional hearings.
So I'd like to introduce Emery and Shelby. Um, hi, welcome.
Hi, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes.
Great, okay. Uh, one thing I just want to mention, Janice, I think we're also supposed to have Melanie Redburn in, uh, in the Zoom. For some reason, I don't think she was able to be promoted, uh, as a panelist.
Let me just.
Um, but, uh, yeah, she'll be, uh, joining once she receives that invite. Uh, there she is. Okay, great.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Um, and then I believe we do have a presentation. Um, is that loaded on your side?
You can share it from yours. You can share it from Shelby. Um, can you share it?
We'll share, okay, we'll share it. Great, okay. Terrific. So we'll pull up those slides.
And that's this, this view of a carpet.
Is this gonna tell us about Ramble or just?
No, this is about the plan. Hey, everyone see my screen all right?
Yep, we can see it now.
F one, great. Thanks, everyone. Um, so yeah, um, good morning and thank you all again for having us. Uh, join your, uh, work session. Um, as Janice mentioned, uh, my name's Emery Lee. And I, uh, work for Ramble. I'm here, uh, with my colleague Shelby Smith and Melody Redburn. Um, and Shelby, if you can just jump to the next slide. Uh, just a brief agenda for today's discussion. Um, in this slide that we'll run through, just a quick introduction of our team. Um, you know, our project process for how we kind of developed the Climate Action Plan. And then, um, the technical presentations, we'll run through, um, you know, uh, how we, uh, developed the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And then the supporting actions for, um, emissions reduction strategies as well as forecasted future emissions. Um, and then at the end, we want to make sure there's time for Q and A. Um, so, um, yeah, let's just jump into the team introduction slide quickly. Um, again, I think, uh, you, you all heard who we are. Um, I can give just a quick fifty second background on who I am. Um, and I'll let Melody and Shelby each do the same. Um, so I am a senior planner at Ramble. I've been working, um, in sort of the New York metropolitan area for the last fifteen years. And my specialty, uh, is in environmental, uh, and sustainability planning. At sort of the community level all the way to sort of the regional level. So yeah, very passionate about, um, you know, a lot of the things that Janice, uh, mentioned and that, uh, those of you who are just, um. You know, discussing the, the need for a climate action plan, very passionate about all of that. And, um, yeah, I'll, I'll let Melody say a few words just about her background as well.
Great, thanks, Emery. Uh, Melody Redburn. I'm a managing consultant. Um, in our, uh, transformational sustainability service line. Um, I focus primarily on decarbonization projects, both at the public, um, public sector, local government, up to state. Uh, state level and also with corporate, uh, corporate entities. Um, my specialty is in greenhouse gas accounting and developing, um, decarbonization roadmaps or climate action plans, um, for our clients. So looking forward to the discussion today.
Hi, all. Nice to meet you. Uh, my name's Shelby Smith, also a senior planner, um, with Ramble, sitting in the New York City office. Um, I have an expertise in water resilience, um, and sustainable design at both the building and site level.
Great, thanks, Shelby. Uh, okay, let's jump into project process. Um, so walking you through just a little bit about, uh, how we approached the project. Um, you know, as it was mentioned, this was kind of a long time coming. Um, you know, we had, um, begun work on this. Um, sort of, I guess, to support and complement the work that was done on Southampton four hundred plus, uh, the sustainability. Element for the comprehensive plan. And, um, you know, I think there was a vision for this to be again, kind of a, a roadmap. Uh, for the town, um, you know, a planning document that could help the town chart, of course, toward. Um, you know, renewable energy and carbon reduction, uh, goals. Um, and it does sort of align with the state's broader goals under the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the C L C P A. Um, so, uh, you know, we, we did develop an inventory, both a municipal, uh, G H D emissions inventory and a community. Uh, emissions inventory, um, and we developed emission scenarios, uh, reduction strategies and actions. That could be taken by the town if and when they're ready or the town is ready, uh, to, um, uh, reduce emissions. Um, and then, you know, we have done a bit of the supporting public engagement work with the town, including, um, a public meeting earlier this year. And community survey, um, been working with Janice, uh, on that quite a bit. And then, um, you know, actually developing the report and the draft that, that you have there, uh, in your hands. Uh, next slide please. Um, here's just the graphic of the timeline, um, for this work. And, um, here we are today in November twenty twenty three, with the town board working session. Um, you can see some of the different components of the, the Climate Action Plan. Uh, there were, uh, there was a carbon sequestration and offset. Um, analysis, um, and then also a sort of economic and financial impacts assessment. Uh, and, you know, um, we're hopeful that you all will find the material in the plan. Um, to be, um, you know, understandable, digestible. Um, we understand you may have some questions, but ideally, um. You know, there's a, a lot of good substantive work there and, you know, we're happy to make any, uh, adjustments after, um. You know, the, the hearing in, in December. Um, so yeah, just wanted to show this graphic please, because some folks are more visual. Next slide please. Um, so I will, uh, allow Melody to continue from here on the technical presentation portion.
Great, thanks. Uh, so first, just at a high level, wanted to talk through how, uh, the process that we follow. To build up the, um, strategies and the emission reduction impacts to, um, show that progress towards carbon neutral. Um, we recognize that Southampton established a goal, um, for that carbon neutrality. And so that was kind of our guiding, um, guiding end goal as we were looking at the, um, the process here. So first we start, uh, with developing the greenhouse gas emissions inventory in order to get a baseline and understand, uh, where the town is starting from. Then we also forecast the emissions, um, into the future to understand, um, how things like population growth. Um, the electric grid, uh, things like that will impact the town's greenhouse gas emissions over time. Um, that way we know how much effort needs to be taken in order to achieve that carbon neutral goal. Then we establish climate action priorities. So this is really kind of groupings of, of the different emissions and their sources. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more about these, uh, in a few slides. The next step is to, uh, brainstorm and develop the reduction strategies and actions. Uh, this step was, um, a pretty collaborative effort where we were pulling ideas from the Southampton four hundred. Um, initiatives as well as other city and state best practices and success stories, uh, case studies that have worked well in other cities. As well as, uh, leaning on our technical experts, uh, within Ramble for some of those, uh, strategies. Uh, the final step is to essentially develop a greenhouse gas emissions model to show those reduction impacts, uh, over time. Uh, with this, we also assign kind of specific actions, um, in order to start to achieve, uh, make progress on those strategies and, and steps. As well as do, um, kind of the, the cost and financial, um, high level cost benefit analysis with that. To, to gain an understanding of the, of the effort and feasibility it will take to implement those. Next slide please. So here we are showing, um, the two greenhouse gas, uh, emissions inventories. On the left, you will see the community wide emissions for twenty nineteen. Uh, twenty nineteen was selected as the base year, uh, both based on data availability and also, um, avoiding the impacts of, of COVID nineteen. Um, that were very atypical. Uh, we didn't want to establish a base year, uh, based off of an atypical year. Um, which is, is, we've seen very commonly across all kinds of municipalities. So twenty nineteen is, is a very common year to, um, start that, that measurement from. Uh, you can see in the pie chart for the community wide emissions, the bulk or most, majority of this. You can see in the pie chart for the community-wide emissions, the bulk or most, majority of those emissions are coming from residential energy. So this is electricity, natural gas, propane, any kind of heating fuel and electricity, I mentioned that. The next wedge is from transportation. So this is obviously all the cars and trucks and vehicles that are on the roads in Southampton. That's followed by commercial energy. So again, electricity, natural gas, propane, et cetera, in commercial buildings and finally followed by waste. The metric we kind of look at to see how Southampton compares to other communities is the metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per capita, so per person, and that's at 13.6. And this is very similar to other Long Island communities and New York area communities that we looked at. So nothing out of the ordinary here that is kind of cause for concern or cause for special focus on those emissions. It's very, very typical that we see with other towns. On the right-hand side, this inventory looks at the town operations, so any of your specific buildings and vehicles and equipment. You can see here, the vehicles and equipment make up the bulk of those, those emissions, which is a bit different than the community-wide inventory. That's primarily just because of the fuel use that goes into all of those vehicles that are needed to support town operations. The next wedge there is buildings. So this is all building energy use. We kind of group those a bit differently than we do on the community side just because they are a smaller portion, so it makes sense to speak to them as a whole. So again, electricity and heating fuels for that building energy. And then finally, streetlights actually make up a not insignificant portion of those emissions. So that's from the electricity that is required to operate those streetlights.
Do you know, can I just ask a question? Because 2019 was right around the time we were converting all the streetlights to LEDs. So was that 7% pre-conversion or is that after?
I believe it's pre-conversion. If those were in progress in 2019, they would not have been reflected in the electricity data yet. But if we were to say update your inventory for 2022, 2023, we would likely see those impacts.
I think we did it before 2019.
I don't know. I got here until 2016. We didn't do it immediately.
We did it before 2019.
We did it before 2020, that's for sure.
It may have been, it may not be fully reflected, though. It took a while to do it. Frank, do you remember what year that was?
I don't know.
Huh, I'm just curious. And in terms of the, you know, the metric tons of carbon per capita, are you using summer population, year-round population? Is it, is these are yearly figures?
Yeah, it's a yearly figure. So we look at the, it's the annual population.
Okay, so you're looking at like LIPA energy usage and things like that year-round?
Yes.
Okay. And for the waste numbers, because we're only processing maybe 10 to 15% of the waste through our facilities. Most of it's the private carders, but you're, you're just basing it on population, right?
Yeah, so that's based on population and then what gets sent to the landfills, even if those landfills are kind of outside of your boundary. And I believe I would have to double check to be sure, but I believe those are based off of, solely off of population. So I think we assume something like seven pounds a day per person roughly, based on kind of national averages.
Okay.
Because, because the data, specific data is very challenging to get because as you mentioned, many of the waste haulers are kind of independent contractors or independent companies. And so gathering that data is very challenging. So we use kind of proxy data to estimate that.
It's just sometimes it's tricky in a seasonal community like ours where if you say it's seven pounds per person and then you use the census population of whatever that is, 69,000, in the summertime, our population's, you know, three, three times that, so. So yeah, I don't know how to calculate those kinds of things, so. But if you're doing some sort of weighted average based on summer and year-round, that's fine.
Yeah, Shelby, do you, or Emery, do you recall the population data?
Not a fan. We might have used census, but we can kind of take a closer look at that and circle back.
Most of the, most of the things in the plan mentioned census data.
Yeah, I would have said use census because
Wouldn't be our summer population.
The visitor numbers, you know, fluctuate and we try to use kind of the most concrete data available.
Okay.
But it's a great point, so we'll circle back as well.
Yeah, we'd just, we'd just potentially make our numbers worse.
Right.
So, all right.
All right. There's no other questions? We'll keep moving.
All right, thank you.
Great. All right, so this next step and the chart shown here is the greenhouse gas emissions forecasting through 2040. We use what we refer to as a business-as-usual scenario, which assumes that no climate actions are being taken. So the only impacts that are shown in this graph are what's considered to be happening kind of outside of town control. So grid decarbonization, so basically anything that LIPA is doing in order to reduce the emissions of the electricity that they provide is included and reflected here. However, things like electric vehicle adoption or building more efficient buildings, none of that is included in this chart. And the goal with developing this chart is basically to see where the emissions are going over time. So then we know what the emissions reductions need to, need to reduce in 2040. We do consider population growth within this, have it partially based on, you know, as you mentioned, the seasonality, just recognizing that there is a need to kind of level that out. But we include population growth of about 0.3% per year. And of course, energy, transportation and waste will all scale with that population. As the trend goes down, so changing from 2019 with 790,000 metric tons of carbon, in 2040, we see that's about five, estimated at 517,000. This is largely due to the decarbonization efforts and the goals of LIPA. And so that has more impact than the population growth at, kind of based on our assumptions that are included in, in that forecast.
Can I ask you, so as I read that, as you go from left to right, if that layer isn't getting smaller as you go to the right, then it's, it's really not changing in this case. So transportation and waste is, is pretty much the same thickness across, but commercial buildings and residential, as you're saying, are going down in terms of how much carbon they're emitting because of, you know, the electricity changes at LIPA, et cetera, more use of renewables. But why isn't transportation going down if more people are going to electric cars? I, I don't understand.
Because, great question, and that's a good observation with the changes in those wedges. We do not have that included in this chart. We consider that to be one of the strategies that we model to show those reductions over time. So in a couple of slides, I'll show what it looks like in 2040 considering that electric vehicle adoption.
Okay.
But so this doesn't include any state or federal mandates in the business-as-usual calculation?
Not beyond the electric utilities, no.
Your, I know it's a small percentage, the, the percentage of greenhouse gases from garbage. Is, but is your number, is that just a general decomposition of the waste or is that the transportation of the waste out of the area? What, what is leading to your number for waste?
I might have to get back to you on that. It depends on the emissions factor that's used for the municipal solid waste. I believe it is just the decomposition of that. However, I can check to see if it's considering a full, a full life cycle of that.
Because there's no, I mean, recycling is, there's some recycling going on, but the bulk of the waste stream is being trucked out of the community. Half of it is going to landfills in other states.
Which would be in transportation.
And half of it's being incinerated. So I don't know if it shows us, even shows up in our number because it's our waste that isn't, you know, staying in the community to decompose. We don't landfill anymore. So that's, you know, we have yard waste and things like that and that we do compost here. I mean, that is a producer of methane for certain, but I don't know how that number's arrived at, but.
Yeah, I can't say that it depends heavily on how the boundary is considered. So because you don't have any landfill operations within your boundary or within your town and that does like leave, it basically, those emissions of, of the incineration and what's occurring with the waste you send there is attributed to wherever the landfill sits, basically.
Okay. It's still our, it's our waste, but it's not showing up in our numbers.
Yeah, and that's just because of the, the guidance for calculating greenhouse gas emissions. It, it just dictates how those batteries are drawn. And, and it, it in some ways simplifies it, but it can kind of discount certain portions of that waste.
On that point, because, you know, I thought this has been a neglected environmental issue. You know, the, the transportation of the amount of waste, that, that type of distance, you know, largely, you know, by diesel fuel, the amount of greenhouse gases is enormous to move a mountain of trash out of state in that I just, you know, down the road, if we can come up with, you know, more recycling, more reuse of materials and even the transportation by rail would be significant. And there's been some efforts to try to build a facility on Long Island, like a depolymerization type of facility that could, you know, waste the energy in a closed-loop system that could also help with, you know, dealing with that issue. But it's, it's not reflected in your numbers, but it, it is real. And it's a lot of pollution from the, the way we handle waste is a disgrace environmentally.
I was looking, while we were chatting, the transportation of that waste would be included in the transportation wedge.
Yeah, because it's the same as it's always been, you know.
Yeah.
It's not getting worse. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Great, we'll go to the next slide. All right, so following the development of the inventories and the forecasts, we looked at major priority areas. So these are really tied to the major sources of emissions, but also additional action areas that will significantly contribute to emissions reductions. So, and then within each of those, we identified specific strategies. So I won't go into these in great detail. I'll touch briefly on the priority areas you see across the top. So buildings, we talked quite a lot about just the energy use associated with those. It's obviously a big component of Southampton's greenhouse gas emissions. So one of the priority areas obviously is reducing the energy in those buildings. But then we see clean energy as recognizing that that's necessary in order to reduce emissions associated with all energy use. Transportation is obviously also a significant portion of that. So the actions within this focus on transitioning to electric or other alternative fuels and then for the community incentivizing sustainable transportation, whether that's electric vehicles or additional alternative options, biking, car share, essentially anything that would reduce the use of cars or transition those cars to cleaner fuels. The next area is sustainable design and land use planning. And this is included because that also significantly influences both how people move but also the, you know, building, building types and spacing and everything that can be added to the, added to the town. Codes and policies can also have a significant influence on clean energy development, energy efficiency, transportation. There's kind of a wide range of, of influences there. Materials and waste, we just talked quite a, quite a lot about there. Enhancing waste reduction programs and identifying more circular solutions, so ways to both reduce that waste but also reuse any waste that is generated. The next priority area is carbon sequestration and removal. We recognize that the strategies identified don't address 100% of those emissions. And in order to achieve carbon neutrality, there will be required sequestration and carbon removal of, of those emissions. This is true kind of across any municipality, town, company that, that we would look at. And finally, capacity building. So while there are not direct emissions reductions kind of tied to capacity building, we acknowledge and just want to point out that it, it does take a lot of effort to kind of lift up and make these programs successful. And so we want to make sure that, that that capacity building gets considered within the Climate Action Plan. Next slide, too. Great. So then our next step, once we identified the various actions, was to determine the associated greenhouse gas emissions impacts with those. So whether it was, you know, direct reductions or, you know, kind of changing the way that those emissions are used. So for instance, if we're reducing diesel or gasoline use, but then also switching to electric vehicles, that shows up in, in these modeled impacts. So you can see here, starting at the left side of the graph, we have the 2019 baseline emissions in that gray bar. As we move right, we can see the impacts of each of those priority areas. We're showing on the yellow bar the expected grid decarbonization impacts from the transition to renewable energy by the electric utility. And then each action or each priority area, excuse me, is, is modeled there based on the actions identified. So buildings is expected to reduce quite a lot and just moving through each of those priority areas that we reviewed. And then finally, on the far right-hand side, we do see that based on, on these reductions and the level of effort that we aligned around for those reductions, there are still some remaining emissions that are expected in 2040 that will need to be addressed. They are expected just due to market changes and policy changes, both at the local, state, federal level and also as technology evolves. We, we recognize that by 2040, there's going to be a lot of additional changes that will influence a lot of these, these strategies that are difficult to kind of crystal ball gaze, I would say, in order to model them. We do incorporate some of those assumptions, however, know that there, there are a lot of changes. So some of those remaining emissions will be addressed through things like technology advancement, advocacy by the town to either the state level or, or beyond. And then some additional policy changes kind of across the slate of possible policy options and incentives. Emery or Shelby, I'll be open to ideas here. We can go through some of the examples of these town actions, but also want to recognize our time. We've got just over, well, over 15 minutes left, so this might be a good point to pause for questions.
Agreed. Yeah, we want, we want to make sure that those of you who haven't had a chance to ask questions yet, let's, we can take a breather here, open the floor to you. And then, you know, if you're interested, we can walk you through some examples of the supporting actions for each of the emissions reduction strategies.
Anybody? Questions? Anybody? Questions?
No.
Oh, good. I just want to get to the town actions first.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we run through these, Melody, just quickly?
Sure. All right, so these are specific to town facilities. We do have additional supporting community actions, but some of them are very similar. So the town actions will give kind of an overview and flavor of what some of those might look like. So first, here we see the buildings priority area. These are heavily focused on energy efficiency and tracking energy use. We recognize that energy efficiency has a significant impact on emissions, both because it uses obviously less energy, but then that also means needing less added generation. You can use clean energy sources to power those. So we have strategies here, both for the existing buildings and then also for any new facilities that are built, including very efficient systems there. The last one considers tracking and reduction of those facilities. I think we've all heard 100 times that what you don't measure, you can't manage. And so this really focuses on getting a good understanding of what energy use and where that energy is coming from within town facilities. The next priority area is focused on clean energy. So this looks at increasing renewable energy generation and infrastructure for the facilities. So this would include looking at things like solar panels or geothermal systems and also collaboration with the utilities to upgrade and add, you know, devices in order to achieve, in order to implement some of those clean energy solutions. We also have a strategy related to microgrids to help address reliability and looking at peak power supply there. The next strategy is related to transportation. As we saw in the town greenhouse gas inventory, this was the largest component of the town's town operations emissions. And so this really focuses heavily on transitioning that fleet to electric or alternative fuels. Alternative fuels could consider things like biodiesel, renewable diesel, fuel cell vehicles. There's an increasing number of options, particularly as some of the federal IRA dollars get distributed across the country. It also looks at some kind of, what am I trying to say? Like policy-type functions or process changes within the town. So looking at a green purchasing policy for fleet vehicles to replace those. And some of that could look at kind of changes to how that financial analysis is done. Because there's benefits to, say, looking at total cost of ownership rather than straight capital expense, for example. And there's benefits to that for DBs. And then also looking at expanding kind of green zone practices across all the town-owned properties. The next priority area is sustainable design and land use planning. I touched on this briefly earlier, but there's, just through that planning, ways to address emissions reductions. So transit-oriented and mixed-use development. This is really focused on kind of changing the way transportation works and building more kind of compact areas that promote more walkability or pedestrian-friendly areas. The next strategy focuses on changing codes and policies to promote clean energy development. This is really kind of enabling, an enabling strategy to build on the clean energy that we touched on earlier. This strategy, materials and waste, looks at enhancing waste reduction programs and circular solutions. So establishing a composting program to also consider food waste. I know we touched on yard waste earlier, but food waste tends to be a significant component of that waste that gets sent to the landfill and has alternative solutions that can be done with that. Also looking at kind of promoting composting for residents or even commercial entities through that. And then launching zero-waste offices, or, excuse me, office practices. So really promoting that kind of zero-waste culture within the town operations. This priority area is again, the carbon sequestration and removal. One of the first steps here is really to get to a good quantification of the natural resources. And then from there, focus on preserving and expanding those. So this can look at things like sponsoring reforestation and tree planting and areas that would benefit from that reforestation. There's some added kind of co-benefits with some of this, particularly related to flooding, urban heat island effects. Some of those things that we see already as impacts from, you know, the changing climate, these natural resource type activities can help reduce some of those impacts. I think that's important to recognize that there's a lot of kind of co-benefits with some of these strategies. The next item is exploring emergent carbon sequestration and approaches. So planting programs to look at non-invasive, pollinator-friendly. Also looking at what's called blue carbon or aquatic sequestration. So really leveraging a lot of the water and ways to do, add plant life and other carbon sinks to that. So kelp farming is an example of that.
What is super sink? What is it?
Or, sorry, Emery, can you touch on that, the super sink?
Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Great. Yeah, so super sink is just a specific type of tree planting program. So it has to do with the density of the tree plantings and sort of the specific methods of planting to maximize, you know, those, that vegetation's capacity to sequester carbon. So, and then they will be, it will be done in targeted, sort of dedicated areas to sort of maximize again the density of the carbon sequestration.
And in that, you include non-invasive species that are pollinator-friendly? One of the issues we have in the town is significant amounts of invasive species are taking over cleared land, Russian, autumn olive, that kind of thing. But do they not sequester carbon?
They do, but there would be, the idea with the super sink program is that it would be, there's a methodology and a sort of rhyme and reason, I guess, if you will, to the planting program. And I think the idea of, you know, including non-invasive and pollinator-friendly species is also just to sort of account for the overall health of the ecological system and sort of the biodiversity factors. So it's something that I think is just always considered a best practice when considering, you know, things like a super sink or reforestation program. It's just to consider sort of the ecological benefits to the sort of local, the local ecological profile.
Right, so if we were actively replacing a forest, you know, of course, we wouldn't plant invasive species, but it is an issue.
Right, absolutely. An important one to just consider and keep in mind.
And a difficult one.
Yes.
Continue, please.
All right, the last action, again, is focused on that capacity building. So this would be both staffing, so looking at sustainability coordinator position to really focus on launching and building up a lot of these programs. We, you know, acknowledge that this is no easy feat, and it does take time and resources. And there's certainly a balance to that. And so there is some additional needs there in order to really be able to implement and drive progress on these strategies. Capacity building could also include things like additional funding to implement community-wide assessments and climate plan, as well as some of the programs and strategies that are identified on that.
Great. Thanks, Melody. So this slide just discusses some of the final steps. You know, again, I think this was already touched on a bit in our earlier discussion, the gathering feedback from today and from the public hearing on December 12th. You know, that it's sort of at the town's pleasure as to, you know, the progress for the plan after feedback has been incorporated. Again, we'd like to hear your thoughts, you know, any questions you still have after today's discussion and/or recommendations. You know, anything that wasn't in there that, you know, as far as strategies or supporting actions you would like to see or not see. You know, we are all ears. So with that, you know, we've got about seven minutes left before noon, but we want to open it up just for your final questions.
So in the actual plan, there's, it's more detailed than this presentation in terms, there's additional recommendations and things like that. But they are, in fact, recommendations. So they're all just ideas. It's like a menu of different things that could be helpful toward achieving that goal. And so it's really up to the town then to look at these things. And maybe new ideas will emerge over time. There'll be new strategies for carbon sequestration that might be applicable to the community. Or, you know, other ways to reduce energy through conservation or whatever it might be, building design. So I think, you know, because we're considering this as part of our comprehensive plan, that some people are concerned that adopting this will, you know, will mean all these radical changes. But it actually doesn't, these are just ideas for the future town boards to consider in terms of meeting well-established goals that the town, you know, has already adopted. So I just wanted to point that out. I mean, it didn't sound like there was anything being recommended that was unreasonable or, you know, pie in the sky. It all seemed pretty generic, but I'm sorry.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
So once this is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, it has the weight of law. And there are items in here that say require, they say mandate, or incentivize. But with words like require and mandate in there, I think it's up to us to be extremely careful with what we put into our plan. I want to bring everyone to page 17.
But they all sort of start with to consider.
But I just want to bring, okay, but I want to bring everybody, I want to bring everybody to page 17, where it says, "The town's climate action plan was informed by stakeholder input through community engagement tactics, including a survey, public workshops, and hearings held throughout the course of its development. To ensure an equitable process, surveys, plural, were also conducted as an accessible alternative to the public workshops and hearings. A visualization of the timeline for the development of the cap is presented on the following page." I want to stop there, and I want to bring your attention to the survey that was completed. On August 23rd, there were 10 people that responded to that survey from the Flanders Riverhead, Northampton area. There was then a public workshop on March 15th at which 11 people spoke. Most were from the Sustainability Committee. In that meeting, Michelangelo Lieberman said that there would be plenty more opportunities for the public to weigh in through the process of more workshops, hearings, and there'd be this whole open process. So everybody felt comfortable with the plan before it was adopted. At the end of that meeting, which got cut short due to time limits, he says, "There are a lot of people on here that we didn't get to. I assure you, we're going to have more opportunities for input." Here's where I have a real problem. The plan that is mentioned in what we got on November 13th, I believe it was, has, it says, "The timeline is presented on the following page." The timeline in my book is not the timeline that is on the town website. The town website timeline removes steps, including an additional workshop, an additional public hearing, and a work session. In the one that is now online, it says that this is a work session on the draft plan. We are then going to have a public hearing on the revised plan, and then the final cap will be released and/or voted on. In the one in the timeline that we were presented with, which I wouldn't have even known they were different until somebody else asked me a question about the timeline, and I said, "No, we're doing all of that. No, we're not. It's different." There was supposed to be another public workshop on the draft, then a public hearing on the draft, then a public hearing on the revised plan, and then the final cap would be released. So my issue here is that the Sustainability Committee received the draft that we are looking at this summer. The town board did not receive this until November 13th. The public did not receive this until November 13th. There are a lot of issues in here with building. And I would like the opportunity to take this plan to the Trades Advisory Committee and get their input on things that are being recommended for mandating and incentivizing and things of that nature. Because this wasn't presented to a single CAC. It wasn't presented to a single committee, other than the Sustainability Committee. And I think before we add something to our comprehensive plan, we owe it to the public to at least follow the timeline that we set and what we told them we would do.
Did you already give it to the Trades Advisory Committee?
No, I have not had a meeting with them yet.
Why not?
Because I got this two and a half weeks ago.
When's their next meeting?
I have to set one up after I give them time to read it.
That's a new committee. So, and I, I know there's been meetings out in, within the community, because I know people have participated in meetings, that I wasn't even aware those meetings were going on to try to get input towards the development of this plan. So, but, you know, to Cindy's comment about mandates, it just seems to me that these are, every time it says mandate, it's prefaced by, "Consider these things." And there's that menu of things, and consider mandate. That doesn't mean the town board in the future will mandate those things, but they can consider that. And if they are going to, there'll be public hearings, analysis, and further review. But this is just basically a broad document creating some choices for the future to address a existential crisis.
The comprehensive plan holds the weight of law, correct? Am I wrong in that?
Comprehensive plan, it's, well, comprehensive plans are what zoning is based on. If you're going to change your zoning categories or you want to look to a plan, and it's good for a municipality, have an updated comprehensive plan so that they can rely on that plan when they, and to back what zoning changes they make.
I think the question is, is it code? Is it Southampton Town Code?
Not that it's a code, but it is what your code is based on.
Can I ask, get my, get the answer to my question?
But that you're asking the question that I was asking, but that wasn't what I was asking.
Okay, holding the weight of law. So is it, all right, then let's parse this out a little bit. Is this code, Southampton Town Code, which is our law?
Is a comprehensive, is a, is a, I'm talking generically, or this?
Or this addition to the comprehensive plan code?
No, I mean, I haven't looked at the plan. I haven't looked at this, I don't, haven't been able to digest this plan yet.
We base code all of the plans.
If it's included in a comprehensive plan, then no, it's not, it's not exactly a code.
Zoning is only valid when you have a comprehensive plan. Otherwise, it's not valid. So you want to have a comprehensive plan in order to culminate into zoning. It's the underpinnings to zoning, but it is not zoning itself.
Right.
I mean, that's sustainability for.
It's a guide.
It's a guideline.
And don't adopt it as part of the comprehensive plan, adopt it as a policy guide.
I don't think it's inconsistent with the sustainability was a 400 plan.
Right.
There's probably 400 recommendations in that plan. Some have been implemented, some have not. But a lot of this is just simply, you know, restating what is in that plan. That's already part of the comprehensive plan. You know, when I talk to people about this, I haven't heard anybody say anything that's objectionable yet. And when I say, you know, "We're considering adopting a climate action plan," they say, "Why haven't you done that already? Like, why, why are you doing that now? That should have been done a long time ago." So I don't.
So Jay, here's one that I find objectionable. Create infrastructure lots for renewable energy in subdivision regulations. In place of open space?
No.
So I said a fact.
That is, the idea there is like you can create a sump. You know, sometimes you create like a sump in a subdivision.
Recharge.
Recharge. You may take that same idea and say, "Okay, you know, instead of just drainage, we can add solar arrays," you know, "so the whole subdivision can have that instead of everybody have to put it on their roof." You know, you can put it in the sump, and that's an infrastructure lot, you know, or allow for.
But this specifically says for renewable energy.
Yeah.
So that would create, that would be solar, that would be best, that would be anything that, that.
Well, you're going to decide if that's not going to be allowed, the best thing. So that's already in play.
I just, I feel like we should follow the timeline we set out.
But you would have to go into chapter 292, go into that law, and create that change and have hearings upon that, which is the supervisor's point, in order to enact it. So it could say require it, but it could be defeated in its process.
All I'm asking for is.
It's not necessarily a fait accompli because it says it in here.
But all I'm asking for is for our other committees within the town to have an opportunity to digest this and weigh in on it before we act on it.
Well, isn't that the point of putting it out there at the public hearing? So how many work sessions are what we need to have? I mean, there's also, there's the logistic problem of budgeting, and we're happy to have as many people as possible. Like you said, only eleven people came to the meeting. We can advertise.
No, there was eleven people had the opportunity to speak at the meeting.
Sure, and we got written commentary that we gave everything to Ramble as well, but I'm just making the point that we're happy to hear from more people about very specific action items.
Part of my hesitation, and, you know, we are trying to get as much public input. The public input I've heard so far from a number of people has been extremely positive, but, you know, one of the things besides the crisis that we're facing that really, you know, should we be delaying much, but also, you know, Councilman Bouvier's worked on this for years, and, yeah, I'd like to, you know, if we can, give him the opportunity, if there's broad support for this, to be able to vote on a plan that he's worked on for many years rather than just, you know, pass the January 1 deadline. So I hear what you're saying, but these, none of these, these are just ideas, and I'm not finding anything objectionable in those ideas, but I just would hate to see John not have an opportunity to.
That's not the proper way to.
Janice, one of the aspects of this plan that I think should be addressed is that we, as a town, have been moving in this direction previous to 2019. We've brought in electric vehicles. Our parks departments, they use electric tools. We're a climate smart, you know, municipality, and we have some of the highest Hertz ratings in the country. That was before 2019. So we're actually measuring off of some of those accomplishments to hopefully go farther in sequestering carbon, right?
Yes.
So we're actually measuring off of, in my opinion, a pretty good track record on this.
Right, and the idea is to decarbonize or to significantly lower our emissions across all these different sectors.
Right. This building, for instance, it's a former school. We retrofitted the heating system. We use heat pumps to redistribute heat and cooling throughout the building. That is something that we've already done aside from this. So we're actually moving in this direction.
We got an award for that.
We got an award for that.
Right, and the recommendation is to consider those ESCO audits and to consider continuing doing that good work in any other facility and using that as a model of success.
Yeah, a lot of this deals with town buildings.
Right, right.
So, I just want to be clear that I'm not against the Climate Action Plan. I just want our other community organizations to be able, and committees to be able to weigh in on it and get their feedback and make sure everybody feels like they had a part in the process and their concerns were understood and met. And Janice, I'm not holding this against you because I know Michelangelo left. You haven't had any staff.
Yeah.
You've been working off in the Riverside Sewer District and a million other things. So by no way am I putting this on you.
No, I understand. That's fine.
I just would like to not rush this through because in my, in my opinion, that's not a good or proper way to legislate.
I wouldn't want some of the concerns about the BEST Energy Storage System to get conflated in this because that seems to be an undertone.
No.
And I know that, may I?
Yes.
And I know that that is a concern of the community that, you know, because I've heard it at the podium, that this is going to go through and you're going to be doing X, Y, or Z. And, you know, this really is a guiding document for our comprehensive plan as we move forward. Anything we do based on BEST or some of the code, that's going to require public hearings as well, so.
You're definitely going to hear from them, but there are things in here that I have heard from the Trades Advisory Committee specifically on that I would like them to give me feedback on and address because I know their concerns that they have brought up on things, so.
Can they attend on December 12th as well?
Like I said, we've had it for two and a half weeks. I just got it to them, so I don't know that, you know, everyone, it's the holidays. It's, that's the other problem of this. It's the holidays. It's the end of the year. Nobody's paying attention to this, and if they are, they're going to be here for very specific reasons. So I would like to get a broader range of people involved and let them, you know, this way we can say, "We heard from our Trades Advisory Committee. We heard from our CACs in other hamlets, and this was the feedback we got," or they're fine with it.
Perhaps, just as a procedural thing, in your resolution setting public hearings, it creates a requirement for a referral to all those agencies moving forward so that everybody is noticed at the same time. And it could just be a simple resolve. The clerk is directed to send it to CACs. Send it to the trades. Send it to whoever you want to send it to.
I wish that we got this draft when the Sustainability Committee got it, you know, I mean, like, we should have gotten this, and then we could have brought it to our CACs, we could have brought it to our committees, and we wouldn't be, and I, and again, I'm not blaming you for that because I know it's.
But it is my responsibility, so I do take that blame.
So I would, but that's just what I would, you know, if a draft of something goes out, I think it should go out to everyone.
You're right. I couldn't agree more.
Can we, can I just ask, can we go through the plan in terms of battery energy storage? Any references to battery energy storage, where they are?
Yeah, it's not going to say that.
And, you know, how you dealt with the battery energy storage issue here, because I haven't found anything in it relating to battery energy storage.
Yeah, we did try to, because I think we had talked with Janice and then some of the energy experts from our team, and also Michelangelo, when he was still involved in the process, and we had, you know, determined that, again, you know, the town's doing a lot of great things. Mike had said that the battery energy storage component was a sensitive one and that there were, and, you know, we all agreed that there were definitely other ways to achieve emissions reductions that may not involve that particular type of approach. So, you know, we did try to explore as many options as we could for the energy-related emissions reduction strategies and supporting actions that did not include or relate to or recommend specifically battery energy storage systems. I think there was maybe one reference in the plan to it in context, as a contextual reference, but we can certainly review the document, go through, you know, again, an additional time and see, you know, if there's anything in there that discusses that.
So there is no recommendation to increase battery energy storage throughout the town?
It, don't think we included that.
No, there is not.
Not, not exactly like that. We have one that's.
Because I want to make that clear, because that's being used, that people are saying the cap is going, this plan is going to promote battery energy storage, and I'm not seeing that anywhere in the plan. I didn't know where they came up with that. It just sounds, I know people are very concerned about battery energy storage, and we do have a moratorium on battery energy storage proposals, and we're studying whether it makes sense in our community or not, but in terms of this plan, it is not promoting in any way battery energy storage that I can see. I just want to make that clear.
But I did, I did have a question actually on the plan.
Okay.
On the, just the layout of the plan. There's so many stats and so much data, and there's no footnote to the appendix, and it would be really helpful if, like, throughout the document, when you have a study or stats, if you could hyperlink it so that you could just go right to that study. And then the other thing I had was the icons. On the top of some of the pages, even online, there are, it says, "Go to the icons here" or something, or it says, "See icons," or "View legend." And if you click on it, it doesn't bring up the legend.
Got it.
So you're flipping back and forth to see where the, what legend you're looking at. And, I mean, that was just, that was just one of, that was just two things that, you know, and then online, the online version, it's nice in the book format, but in the online version, there are some paragraphs that go from one page over to the next page. So if you're reading it online, it looks like the paragraph stops, but it's on the next page because it's in the book format. That was just a few layout options that I.
Those are excellent comments. Yeah, I think we could definitely make adjustments and add some footnotes in, and then, you know, have sort of a version for online and a version for print. Because I think typically it's like, when you have documents posted online, you can click a URL for the online and click a URL if you want to download and print it out.
And again, on you, on the, for you, on the, you know, the community feedback and the engagement, you know, I don't think that was your short come. I think it just got kind of lost in the transition of losing Michelangelo, and, you know, he was full on into this, and I don't doubt for a second that he would have had six more public workshops on it.
Oh, definitely. And now we have Seth, who's in the audience here, who is willing to do whatever, to take up that baton and work with whoever we need to. So we have the ability to meet with whoever would like to go over anything, you know, so now that we have Seth, I think that that would be very helpful.
I just don't want to rush it through. You know, I think that's the biggest thing to me right now. I just, we need to digest it and get it out there and see what people have to say.
Well, we do have a hearing scheduled, so.
Yes, December 12th at 1:00, and Emery and her team will be back to go over it again, do a presentation shorter but similar, and then be able to respond to the technical things that may come up in that hearing so that, you know, they can speak to it right then and there, right, Emery?
Councilor Murtough? Yeah, everything that's in here that references back to the town, I think is wonderful. I think we should absolutely lead by example. What concerns me is, you know, we have five bullet points about what the town is doing, and then it's like, well, we may actually put this in residential, and that's where people are asking the questions. As far as the BEST goes, BEST versus solar worlds apart. So can we be more specific in some of the documentations that would say for solar arrays versus a BEST or any future other sustainable energy?
Yeah, sustainable energy options. At that point, you know, there's just some, there's enough vagueness to be, yes, this is just for future boards to use, but then there's some vagueness that kind of backs us into a corner on some things here too.
Sure, but of course, you know, assuming there's some appetite in the future, if there's safety provisions are worked out and you eliminate any possibility of putting battery energy near residential and over an industrial, you may want to put some battery storage in an industrial zone away from everyone.
And I think there's terminology in here too that people aren't familiar with, like aggregate energy and microgrids, and what does that entail?
Okay, that's a good comment.
Yeah, I'm going to actually, actually turn to page 35. The Cap Carbon Reduction Forecasting. On the right side, there's a paragraph while these findings. If you go down to, for instance, "Many of the code amendments included in the sustainable design and land use climate priority are designed to facilitate the construction of both small and large scale. Renewable energy systems discussed in the Clean Energy Climate Priority." Can you tell me what that is?
Emery? Did you say the Clean Energy Climate, sorry, could you repeat the last part? It was just hard to hear.
Clean Energy Climate Priority, sorry.
I think that's supposed to be CLCPA.
That's a state, can you go further and explain what that is, the state law?
The Climate, yeah, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. It's just the state's goals for reducing carbon emissions statewide, and they have various targets set at 2040, so the same sort of timeline that the town is targeting. They want to go to 100% zero emissions electricity by 2040 at the state level, and then, you know, ideally by 2050, the state of New York is completely off of fossil fuels by 2050. So I think the reference there to the small and large-scale renewable energy was just, you know, in reference to following kind of the state's overall leadership.
I think we probably need a hyperlink to the plan there, like Councilwoman McNamee was saying, a footnote.
Sorry, you said that was page 35?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to add to that too, I think that specifically was speaking to, for instance, how we're not really able to quantify something like a code amendment, so just kind of including that as context to, you know, basically how, from a methodological standpoint, we treated things like partnerships and incentives and code amendments that are, you know, we don't, we aren't able to quantify in the same way as some of the other initiatives here.
Thank you.
So a small-scale renewable energy system could mean a community solar field, which is, as far as our code and land use goes, it's nearly impossible currently for, for, you know, different parcels to create such a microgrid, right? A small energy conglomerate where they're, where they're producing their own energy. And like somehow we could make this happen, but currently, our code does not support it. So small-scale energy grid, right?
Good recommendation, yeah.
I mean, and people, by the way, have asked me for this, and, you know, because they want to explore this in their, in their own communities, because they're committed.
I mean, you could have also, you know, in a subdivision, you could have reserved an area for potential sewage, like a, what do they call those?
Cluster system.
Cluster system too. You know, the county's still not allowing that.
That would be the best thing, because then we wouldn't have to.
That would be a wonderful thing too, but that sort of falls into the same line of thinking, you know, except it's more about nitrogen. Can I ask the, I'm sure you guys reviewed that Sustainability 400 plan, and Janice, you know, there are, I think, hundreds of recommendations in there. Has anybody looked to see in the recommendations here, how many of them are just restating things that have already been stated, and how many of them are new, and if there's any inconsistencies with what was stated in the, you know, the larger Sustainability Plan?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So part of our process in developing the cap was, the very first, one of the very first things we did was, we did look through the Southampton 400 Plan. We basically took all of the recommendations in that plan, put them in a large matrix, and then we went through and evaluated each one and determined, okay, and this was when actually Mike was still involved, so we were able to determine which ones have already been advanced or are in progress, or maybe the town is kind of, you know, currently pursuing or they've already checked off, and then which, from his point of view and his input, and some of his colleagues, and we also spoke with the town engineer to get some feedback on, you know, which things are likely to advance in the near future, and then where there may be where gaps. So it was sort of a gap analysis that we did using that matrix, and we were able to narrow down some of the recommendations that hadn't yet been acted on and that were worth carrying forward and/or building on in the Climate Action Plan.
So the answer is, a lot of, a lot of what is in this plan has already been stated in the Sustainability Plan, but maybe to a slightly lesser degree. I mean, that would be helpful to know, so. What is new and what is a reinstatement of something that's already in our comprehensive plan?
So maybe something like a graphic that kind of summarizes, you know, some of the Southampton 400 recommendations and then the sort of additional cap-specific recommendations?
Or as you're making the recommendations to maybe some sort of footnote that's, or asterisks, so we know that was already, that's something that's not new, that's just a reinstatement of something that the town's already adopted as a goal or a possible strategy.
Yeah, I think that could be done graphically, just so that there's a visual distinction, you're saying, in the document itself.
Well, it's also as we debate some of these recommendations about, oh, you know, what effect might that have in the future if those policies are adopted, you know, and that could lead to some hesitation with adopting this plan, to say, "Okay, you already have an adopted plan that says that. It's not inconsistent, it's just, you're just stating it again." Because I think actually there, there were so many recommendations in the Sustainability 400 Plan, and, yes, some of them have been implemented, but a lot have not yet been implemented. But I think that, you know, potentially goes further than this plan. Janice, no, would you, would you agree?
Yeah, I think, you know, they should be looked at in tandem, and I think that matrix, maybe even just provide us that matrix as an appendices so that that work is not lost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I also want to give, we, we have Tip Burlin here, who is on our Sustainability Committee and had raised his hand before. So Tip, did you want to say something? If you do, you're going to have to come over here, and I know it's sometimes challenging to speak. Tip, if you don't know, Tip is a nuclear engineer by training.
Ten dependent of this discussion.
You're not building a nuclear facility.
Highly knowledgeable individual on these types of issues.
I just wanted to make two points. One, BES is mentioned once in the plan. And I can tell you exactly what it says because I assumed this question would come up. Says, explore incentives for distributed energy systems, including small battery energy storage systems, BES, for commercial developments. That sentence is used twice, but that's it.
And it says small and it's specifically for commercial use, so it's not.
That's what it says.
Commercial buildings, so not an industrial scale.
And it says, explore incentives. There's no requirement in here for that.
It doesn't, you know, every house that has solar panels has a battery energy storage, something in their rack or something, right? Don't they?
No.
Don't they store the energy if you have a solar?
Oh, you can buy battery storage devices. But most houses, our house, for example, does not have battery energy storage. There are small inputs to the grid. The grid can handle those without any disruption. It's when you get large percentages of the grid covered by solar, for example, which is intermittent.
I just say that because I want to just create a distinction between, you know, battery, people store energy in batteries all over the place. But when, I think the public concern is about these industrial scale facilities that are working sort of as utilities that are downloading power from the grid and then releasing it, you know, during the day in those peak times. And that may be different than these small scale facilities that are tied into solar panels that unfortunately we use the same terminology. But, you know, I think the public concern is those utility scale battery energy storage. So I just wanted to say.
One other point, if I may. The sustainability 400 plus plan is not a plan in the normal sense of the word. We didn't have the money. Janice was present at the beginning. We didn't have the money or the resources to develop, for example, the carbon inventory, the emissions inventory. So what we put together was, to a degree, a wish list that says, these are good things to do. We can't prioritize them because we didn't have the resources to estimate the cost. That plan does give a qualitative estimate of cost or the impact. So don't mistake the sustainability 400 plan as a substitute for this.
This is much more quantifiable.
That's not part of the comprehensive plan, correct?
It is.
It is?
That was.
It is. It was adopted in 2013, I think.
That was an extremely controversial plan.
How much public input went into that though?
Same level of detail, I think.
Public hearings of the community.
Many, many public hearings. There was a lot of concern. It was a different time than.
Many, many.
But, but look at what happened since then. That was 2012. Nothing bad took place. Everybody was so upset that something terrible was going to happen. Nothing terrible took place. We all are just trying to prioritize which way to go and not argue amongst ourselves. Have a roadmap that you decide on and then we implement. That's really the point.
I'm just concerned when you use words like mandate and, you know.
Understandable. And we can work to fix that in a way that makes sense.
Just to be an example, because everyone I saw always said, consider the following. Then it would say mandate, but it wouldn't, it was prefaced by consider a mandate, not mandate.
Adopt a policy mandating solar ready roofs for newly.
That's page seventy-four.
You're looking at it in seventy.
You know, if you don't, so here's, here's a good example. When Gabreski Airport was built.
No, seventy-three.
We had literally a PDD law. We were debating it, the town board was debating at the time. And they didn't tell, they had half a million square feet of flat roofs and they didn't mandate solar there. And they, they had the opportunity to put that in the code and they just didn't.
Stronger I beams or stronger trusses.
Every time a site plan had come in and we said, can we, can you put some solar on the roof? You know, they were like, nah. And there was nothing to make them do it. And so, you know, even though mandate sounds scary and terrible, I, we love the man, we love the incentive side of things to give people, you know, something.
Well, it says, well, a lot of them say incentivize or require.
Yeah, but if you don't require it, most people will just opt to not do it.
And these are under the strategies.
Where that mandate word is such a terrible word really, but there should be a give and take on that. But there is, the final analysis is left to a developer. Most likely they'll just opt to not do it.
And these are under recommended strategies for the board to take action on, for a board to take action on in the future.
Write a code, adopt a code.
And that's under amend codes and policies to promote clean energy development.
Yeah, but if we, if we put the code through that doesn't comply with this plan, part of our plan, we get Article 78ed and said, you can't do that because this is what your comprehensive plan says that you should do. It happens.
It's possible, I suppose. Anybody can sue anyone for any reason.
Right. I mean, the court will look at if you, you know, what is your basis for your change? Why did you do this? Do you have a plan? So they will look at, if, if a comprehensive plan exists and not, every town doesn't have an updated comprehensive plan. But if they do, the court will look at that, you know, and they might not say, you know, town board, you got to 100% follow the comprehensive plan. They typically will not say that. But they, but they'll look to see, well, the justification for the action you took. And if you have a comprehensive plan and you have wording and you're following that, then sure, that.
They can Hampton Bays, the quarter.
So we have, this is part of a comprehensive plan. And we make code to, and I'm reading from this, to incentivize transit oriented and mixed use development, which I fully support and my constituents do too, you know. We're, we're doing the right thing. And we have the plan to back up our code.
But I guarantee you're going to have people that are going to come in that are going to say, you know, this plan calls for infill development in downtowns pretty much. So who is that going to impact? And is that going to impact, you know, your zoning for Hampton Bays? Because now you have something as part of your comprehensive plan that says, put all the density there.
You know what? We have that already. We have that from, from 1999. Every single solitary plan we have says promote infill development. And I can show you at least 10 different ones.
But I'm telling you, that's going to be an argument with this.
Sure, but this is nothing new. You know, like that's just good planning. That's just smart growth. Instead of sprawling out on a farm field, you put infill development.
We can add in extra words, but you know, these, everything is prefaced with, you know, these, you know, are recommendations. These are, you know, ideas, the specific strategies intended to help guide the town toward meaningful, you know, measurable and manageable climate action. It's always prefaced by, you know, this is a set of strategies for consideration. But if, if it would make people feel better, like before it says mandate, it could say, you know, consider mandating. We could repeat those words that are sort of prefacing all of these recommendations. I have no problem with that.
It's our recommendation to mandate or something.
Right.
And in a, in an example.
That wouldn't be too hard, right, to add in that?
Yeah, we, we can absolutely, you know, add, add that kind of consider proposition in front of it.
We would recommend or, you know, our.
Kind of looking at all of the, the, the recommendations. So, so we didn't necessarily, in instances where consider is not kind of prefacing it. Yeah, to your point, we weren't necessarily indicating that that was something that would be mandated or adopted.
It would give the board a little wiggle room on a case by case basis.
And I understand, like I said, I understand that, you know, removing things or not requiring them kind of shifts those percentage numbers because now it's not something that will happen. So it kind of takes it out of, or, you know, not necessarily going to happen. Like all of this has to happen to meet those percentages that you put forward.
Right. And if it's any, if it's helpful context, you know, the language in this climate action plan is similar in terms of style and tone to other climate action plans that other towns and municipalities have, have issued and adopted. And there's a balance, right, between, you know, making a recommendation and sort of making it something that's actionable and that would in reality, you know, potentially have legs versus, you know, keeping it to a place where you don't want to upset people or make people feel like you're, you're, it's top down. You know what I mean? You, you want to be sensitive to, you know, community concerns, even in the language that's chosen.
Because I mean, I did go through some of your previous work and, you know, for, for some of the Sunnies and, and where you had a very specific, you know, like you're dealing with a college and their reduction, where I think it would be a lot easier for you to say, hey, we're going to look at the town, do an inventory and give you a plan for yourselves, rather than take all the variables in for the entire town. And I appreciate that. I just, you know, it's, it's grandiose. And it's a lot to digest.
That, that's not what they're doing here.
No, 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 but that's what they've done another.
Right, I understand.
So you can get more specific with your numbers and your, like they could, they could actually quantify different, like power plants and, and heating and cooling systems within the college and how they would phase them out over time and the costs. And so it's a lot easier, not, not, not easier to do, but it's a much smaller scale than saying, you know, you can't take all the variables in for 69,000 people and put them into a plan.
And with 69,000 people and as elected officials, looking at strategy SD one, incentivize transit oriented and mixed use development, I, I support that. And I also know that there are other people that may not. And so as far as criticism go, you know, it, it's going to happen. And we are going to, you know, make our best decision to move this town forward. It's going to be there. So, you know, we can certainly change some of the language here, but I see these as recommendations for future boards to consider and, you know, I like them.
It's a roadmap, a guiding document. But if, if putting in language will help get the, you know, allay some of those concerns that, you know, this is going to happen, you know, this is for a future board to consider, all of these things. But it's for this board potentially to lay out this document with some of those ideas that could get you to where the town has already said it wants to go. So yeah, so maybe, I mean, this is the one we're going to, to public hearing on. But I, I think that that's a good recommendation is to clarify that their recommendations.
And also it varies, understanding that people may have not had a chance to weigh in. But instead of using the time to say, we didn't have a chance to weigh in, it would be better use of the time to say, you know, page 71 is, my issue is this, this and that. Versus, you know, you didn't have three public workshops, you only had one or whatever our criticism is. We accept that criticism, but it's more productive to actually say what the issue is. And if that's the only issue, you know, we can, we can try to remedy that. But if it's, you know, we, we, if we had more workshops, what would take, what would come out of it? What is it that you're looking for it to say is the most important thing.
Well, it's some of the things, like let's say the recommendation for solar ready roofs, right?
Right.
You know, that's a dry, design criteria. And if the town were actually going to require roofs be designed in a way that they're set up for solar, probably needs to go through the landmarks committee. There's, you know, there's other boards that may want to weigh in and say, okay, is that going to mean that our roofs no longer going to be historic looking or whatever it is? But that's for future debate. It's a, it's a good idea to, to consider roof designs, you know, that are.
And that's why I would like to, it would feel much more comfortable. With a planning document that says consider instead of mandate.
Sure, I understand that. Consider mandating.
That's kind of what it says now.
It says mandate in a couple of sections. Yeah, but it also says amend code and policy. And then to mandate. So, but you would have to consider that in order to even get to a resolution.
But before it says, these are strategies to be considered.
Nothing can happen until you go through that public process for each and everything that requires a public process. So you always have that attached to all these actions.
Yeah.
I just, I think we all want it to be a document that, you know, not everybody is going to love it and not everybody is going to. It's never going to happen. But I would feel more comfortable if I know on my own that we got it in the hands of as many people as possible. We heard their feedback. Especially, you know, in, in like, like getting it to Franca and getting it to, to some of our other CACs and civics and giving them an opportunity to just say, hey, you know, maybe this is, we're not comfortable with this, but maybe you could change, you know? There's going to be, there's going to be a lot of feedback. There's going to be things you can change. And there's going to be things you say, no, it has to stay this way because. And we just have to at least give people the opportunity to feel like they were heard of.
But it's important too that they understand that this isn't a zoning code change. This is a, it is potentially part of a comprehensive plan, but it's a set of recommendations to address climate change. For future boards to consider, you know, each recommendation if they want to move forward. But if we can tone down the language a little bit to make it even clearer that these are just ideas for future consideration, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that all those people reviewing it are also reviewing it, understanding that we're not requiring solar ready roofs. That is not something we're doing. We're adopting a plan that is recommending the board consider that in the future.
Well, it's the same thing with the elimination of fossil fuels as heating inside homes and commercial businesses. The only suggestion to that is incentivate, incentivizing, you know, the transition for that, either through tax reductions and, you know, there's nothing that says we're heading towards eliminating that.
Right, like we're not in the business, you know, I heard people very upset that state is talking about propane. And, you know, meanwhile, we just literally got propane taken. You know, like, so people are like, wait a minute. Don't take away my guest stove. You know, we're not talking about that. We're talking about just higher level actions and strategies. And, and like they said initially, there may be other things that come down that will bring that down. Despite all our best efforts, they're going to do it.
This doesn't even get us there.
Yeah, and this doesn't even get us there. So we have a lot of work to do. We need a roadmap forward. We need a buy-in from the public and from you to believe that these steps are going to get us somewhere. They've quantified that they'll get us somewhere. And we know that that is, you know, if we don't take the first step, we're not going to get anywhere. So it has to be, you know, considered. That these steps at least will do something. They have a measurable impact. And they also, you know, sort of say there, these are the high ticket price items. These are low hanging fruit. You know, and then we would go through the plan and try to figure out which is best to start with. And that's what the committee would help when they liaise onto that committee.
Any, any other comments or questions? We all, everybody good?
Thank you for going over the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all so much. We really appreciate your feedback. Extremely valuable.
Okay, thank you.
See you at the hearing. Bye-bye.
Okay. They tried to get at. So now we are.
Thank you, Tip.
Cha-ching, cha-ching.
About a half an hour behind schedule here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can go.
Thanks.
Run, Janice, run.
So we're going to go to updates. So I, I guess the, the first update is, we already sort of covered earlier. Charles, this is your last full-time day with the town. So we really, again, appreciate all you've been doing. Charles Certon has been the man behind the camera here. So, but really instrumental through the pandemic in terms of being able to keep meetings going and being able to give the public broader access to our, our hearings and work sessions.
I feel like he should come out and get on camera.
Come on, Charles.
He likes to be behind the camera. I'm not a camera guy.
Come on, put it in.
Sort of like meeting the Wizard of Oz, you know, coming out from behind the curtain here. Thank you, Charles.
You have to go to the mic if you want to speak.
You've been doing this for how many years?
Did you sing?
You gotta go to the mic. I just, I just asked you that question.
Oh, and he can't even put himself on.
I just wanted to do that. Because Charles often, when somebody is speaking and we can't, they can't, so.
He's recording and he can't hear him. He's always saying, go to the mic.
Just a little history, just in case you guys don't know. CTV started in 2005. I came in 2005. Funny story. Friend of mine told me, hey, man, there's a ad in the paper. This would be perfect for you. You need to go. So I came to the town and they said, there's no job. So I came to the town and they said, "There's no job open." So I went back to my friend and he says, "Man, that's no job." So I walked into Bruce Nowlapinski's office, and you'll enjoy this.
So Bruce, you say, so Bruce was the head of?
He was the head of C T V. And the first thing I said to him, I said, "Man, the video is great, man, but the audio kind of doesn't sound good." And, um, I said, "I'm an audio engineer, um, are you looking for someone?" And he hired me right there. So I worked two years part-time, and then I became a civil servant. But when I first started doing the town board, I had to sit right there with one camera. So we've come a long way. I think Southampton is very ahead of most of the peg channels in the state. So we were the first, one of the first to get three cameras in the room. So it's, it's been a good journey. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
And if the public is aware of the other places other than the portal to go and look at meetings and shows and things like that, so do you have, you set up a whole YouTube?
We have a bunch of different things. We can, you can see, watch the stream live on ctvsouthampton.com, and you can also, don't tell Cindy, but you can go to YouTube and watch it live.
And for the public's knowledge, our official repository of our meetings is the Town Clerk's Office.
That is correct, but.
But sometimes the picture and the audio is clearer on the YouTube channel.
I think so, only because, um, you know, we've had this thing with cable vision, and I don't wanna slam them, but, um, their system is pretty antiquated for the peg channels. Um, we don't have H D, we don't have, you know, so we send them an H D signal, but they bump it down to standard def, and that's the good thing about YouTube, it's, it's H D, you know.
It's H D, and, right, and that, that's, is it S E A dash TV? Is that what it is?
It's S E A T V.
Like, like, just like YouTube.
Southampton.
Oh, no hyphen, it's S E A T V.
Southampton.
Southampton dot.
Uh, no, well, if you just go to YouTube, if you go to YouTube and you type in C T V Southampton, it'll go to our channel.
Okay, S E A T V Southampton.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, I love this. I've done this a long time, and I really love what I do. I plan to, you know, keep doing it at some capacity. Um, this is probably the second time I've ever spoken at a town board. And so eighteen years, I'm really happy to, you know.
You've taught, you've spoken at a town board meeting a lot more than twice. We hear you almost every meeting.
Back away from the microphone, please.
That's true, that's true, in, in person.
Step back.
Yeah.
Come to the mic.
Well, we're gonna miss, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah, this was a challenge, though. This whole thing was a big challenge with the Zoom and, uh, a good challenge, though. I think the, at least the people at home can watch a town board meeting live and speak. Yeah.
Participate, and that's gone really well.
So I think that's the.
You figuring that out.
The only thing that COVID was good for.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, we appreciate your work, Charles.
I appreciate you.
I, I mean, you said civil servant before, government employees, you and other people in this building and in this town. Incredibly important. It is where the rubber hits the pavement, you know, you're doing the work, and, uh, you know, I appreciate your work and the work of our employees as well.
A little bit, you know, at least half. I'll, I'll be here part-time.
You're gonna stay here part-time.
Yeah, yeah. I don't wanna just give it up.
You'll help train your replacements, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Not that you can be replaced.
No, it's, you know, I'm not gonna tell them everything.
Okay. Turn around and wave at the camera, please. They're looking at the back of you. There you go.
All right. All right, um.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you, Charles.
Certain moves.
Got the free plug yesterday. Yeah, he did, he did. And I, I got to make the, we'll miss you, that I'm certain, but he's actually certain, so.
I heard it.
And so, but that, that's my segue into, uh, the Big Duck lighting. So, yeah, last night was the Big Duck lighting, it was really a county event, but it's sort of a town event cause, A, it's here, but the property is a town park, but the duck itself belongs to Suffolk County. But it really has become a wonderful, wonderful tradition for the past twenty years of, uh, the, the Christmas lights, and, uh, they do this beautiful, um, sort of wreath around the, around the Big Duck, and, uh, Santa Claus showed up. Long journey from the North Pole, the last leg of the journey, the fire department assisted him. It was cold last night, it was really cold, but, uh, it was a warm, warm feeling in the community. They, there were, must have been kids, I'd say at least a hundred kids who lined up.
Great turnout, I've never seen so many kids at that event.
I was, you know, I was trying to, you know, introduce the kid, each kid, I would get their name to, to Santa, but I, I had left my gloves in the car. At one point, I just couldn't feel my hands anymore, cause it was, it was that cold. Uh, but a lot of kids got to tell Santa what they're hoping for for Christmas. Rick, uh, Councilman Martell was there and, and got to say some holiday greetings to the crowd. Uh, Nadine Greenberg and, uh, the choir was there, uh, they, they were wonderful. I think they sang five songs. They sort of take, uh, familiar Christmas songs and redo the lyrics with, uh, the Big Duck in mind, which is, which is a lot of fun, and, of course, I got to tell them, I think, duck jokes and a few rotten eggs in there, but, uh, for the most part, I think, uh, there was some good laughs, good laughs.
At one point, I thought Quackerjack was gonna knock you off.
Foul, foul ball.
Yeah, that was one of the, why didn't Quackerjack go to the Big Ducks, uh, the, yeah, the Long Island Ducks baseball game? Cause he heard they were hitting fouls. Boom, I know, so, but, uh, it's fun, Quackerjack is the mascot for Long Island Ducks and is always there. And I think people really had a great time. Uh, uh, they, they put up with my jokes. But we also, we also had, uh, Jason Schmeggen, who is the, uh, Parks Commissioner, and Richard Martin, who's, uh, I think the historic preservation expert for the county. Um, so it was, uh, there was other, uh, Chief Kieran was there, and, uh, I think a fun time was had by all. So, uh, and of course, uh, the Flanders Fire Department, you know, who, you know, played a, a very important role there, uh, in the event, you know, coming off the tragic loss of, uh, their former chief, uh, Brian Williams, but, uh, it was a, uh, really, really, really nice, uh, community event up in Flanders. A lot of participation, and, uh, it's a little sad for me, cause I've been emceeing the event for the past twenty years as a legislator and then as the town supervisor, but they, they, they said if I wanna come back, they, they might let me. That's, I might get an honorary spot up on the stage, uh, but it was really, really nice. Okay, so.
Yeah, there is some talk of all your jokes going into a book that will be for sale at.
At the store, yeah.
Maybe it can be Quackerjack.
Exactly.
You can take off your ad at the end.
Exactly, so, uh, all right, um, so other, uh, other updates anybody wanna make? Before we go to the second, yeah.
Yeah, I do. Um, yeah, last night I couldn't be there. We had a youth and government meeting at, uh, at, in Hampton Bays. We've got, we've got, uh, a good contingent of students who are preparing bills to go up to Albany and present them on the floor of our legislature in March. I'm proud of them, way to go. Uh, also, uh, that program in West Hampton Beach has really taken off. A middle school group went up there, uh, in November, and one of their students was elected lieutenant governor for next year, so, you know, way to go there. Um, also, uh, on December ninth, we are going to be replanting beach grass out on the Tumbolo uh, that we know as Foster Memorial Beach, commonly known as Long Beach, uh, from ten to twelve on December ninth, like I said. Uh, and, uh, finally, on December sixth, we have, uh, public referendums for our four ambulance districts. That's Flanders, Northampton, West Hampton, Hampton Bays, and Southampton. The voting location for all four of those is at, uh, the Hampton Bays, uh, in Hampton Bays at Red Creek Park at the Activity Center. That's the building on the right. As you go in and the polls are open from two to eight P M on December sixth, you have to be a registered voter and living in those particular districts. So please come out and vote, and, uh, the nature of that vote is to increase the LO-SAP payments for our ambulance volunteers from twenty dollars a month to thirty dollars a month.
Right, uh, Rick.
I was just gonna say that the, uh, Heart of the Hamptons is having the Polar Bear Plunge at Cooper's Beach on Saturday, December ninth.
Well, that's a really fun event. Though their Moonlight Plunge was a little bit easier.
In the summer?
In the summer, yeah. I have done the Polar Bear Plunge. It's, you know, there's a lot braver people, but it, it's gold. It's gold, but it's a great charity. Heart of the Hamptons does an amazing job. There's been a lot of events, there's a lot of holiday parties, a lot of lightings coming up.
I have to mention, this Saturday at two o'clock is the East Quogue Holiday on Main, followed by the tree lighting.
Oh, that's good. And do we know any other tree lighting times? The windmill at the college, is that?
It's Friday, I believe.
That's Friday?
Hampton Bays is Saturday around six.
Okay. They had, uh, I went, I went to the Turkey Trot in Hampton Bays, I saw the fire, yeah, for the fire department. So, uh, yeah, it was, uh, I think they had like five hundred runners or something like that, yeah.
Fri- next Friday, December eighth, from five to seven at Chancellor's Hall.
Uh, what day is it?
Next Friday, December eighth, five to seven.
Five to seven.
Chancellor's Hall.
December.
Eighth.
Eighth. Five to seven, Chancellors', and then obviously the windmill. Um, any other, we have any other times for tree lightings?
I don't have any.
Now, we have, we do have another work, we have more work session, like, next week we'll have work session again, so. All right, so we'll, we'll keep people posted as we get more of the, the lightings. All right, um, so that's it for updates. So for exec, we have personnel matter. Um, and we also have, uh, land acquisitions, both C P F and I think C H F as well. So, uh, I will, uh, make a motion, is there also confidential legal? Do you have any updates?
What's added to? I made with the personnel.
All right, so we'll say those three items, confidential legal advice, land acquisition, and personnel. So I'll make a motion to, uh, end our work session and go to executive session on those items.
Say again?
Say again, my councilor, if you'll, if you'll.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned for all other purposes. Do you guys want a few minutes to get a bite, or?
I just gotta use the restroom and get a coffee.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't mind fifteen minutes.